I'd like to call the Board of Trustees regular meeting Monday, December 3rd, 2014 at 7:30 PM.
Oh, it just said.
It says 3rd, I question that.
That's why you started.
December 1st, 2014 at 7:30 PM. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Adoption of agenda. Any additions or deletions? I would like to add two, if I could please. Letter L, I'd like to schedule a public hearing date for CDBG. And I'd like to add letter M, mailing 2015 personal property statements. And if there's any other additions or deletions.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the two additions of L and M.
Support, thank you. Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Trustee Boyd. Other questions, discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion passes. Public comments? Any public comments at this time? No public comments. Approval of minutes, 11-3, 2014. Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Support.
Thank you. Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion passes. Number five, Sheriff's report. We do have the latest Sheriff's report for October, received on 11/17/14. If no questions, I'll move to the next one. Fire Department report. Chief?
Receiving file, please.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the chief? EMS report. Mr. White?
Good evening, just a couple of brief items. One, a reminder, because our next meeting, I think, will actually fall after the date of the blood drive. The annual blood drive for the EMS will be January the 6th from 3 until 9. We're gonna hold a winter drive, we're gonna change things around and hold a winter drive up at Richmond Township, and then move the summer drive, we hope, here to Lennox Township in July. So this drive will be at the Richmond Township Hall, the school section, M19, from 3 PM to 9 PM. So if you're available, come donate, we'd certainly appreciate it. The other thing, I'd just like to say thank you to Attorney Joppik and Jeanette from the Supervisor's Office for their assistance in helping me get the purchase agreement pulled together for the ambulance that's in front of the township tonight for signature that have been approved, just pending some, a couple little changes we needed to make in that. So thank you, thank you to both of you for your assistance with that.
Thank you, sir. DPW report.
Good evening, just a few things I wanted to do a summary on, as part of my report that's been submitted. As most of you are aware from my emails, we've had an order complaint, especially here in the building, this past month. We've started and continue to do an investigation into the noxious order. We've conducted various air monitoring, as well as inspections. I'm on the sanitary line. We found a few problems that we've repaired to date, a couple repairs that are pending currently, waiting for the contractors to schedule those. Everything is still ongoing. If you haven't seen it yet, I did put together a formal email to the board this afternoon with as much detail as I can give you at this point. But we're not gonna stop there, we're gonna keep digging at this thing until we can come up with the root cause. Last month, you approved for maintenance on the dumbwaiter for one year. As most of you know, right after the meeting, I left for vacation. I did contact this person while I was on vacation. She was supposed to send me the information, but I arrived back, the information wasn't here. It took a couple days to get her back on the phone, and basically, I got less help. Scheduling is somebody else, they'll be calling you next week. But I've yet to hear from that person, so within another day or so, I'm probably gonna be calling her superiors to find out why this has taken so long, and what is the problem. Pump station, as you may recall, we, I asked for approval to get a pump rebuilt. That rebuild has been completed, and that pump has been delivered back to us, so we still have, we currently have a spare ready in case we encounter problems. And then lastly, the old building cleanup. While I was gone, Patrick and Wes started on that project. They were able to complete some of it, but not all of it. As, from what they tell me, there's still files that need to be brought over, and then there are files here that are upstairs that need to be put back down in the basement. So, at this time, I know we had approval to keep Patrick until the 1st of December. I would suggest, you know, looking ahead, we have roughly, what, 14 days, 14 days left in the year, to extend that to the end of December, and reevaluate it at that time.
And is he needed for things other than my files that are over at the other building?
There's, I know there's files over here, across from the break room. I don't know if there's 20 or so boxes that need all put downstairs and put on the shelves. I know they still have debris from when they put the shelves together in the basement that needs to be taken out. Files over in the old clerk's office, there's still some carpeting that needs to be removed over there, and ceiling tiles have time gloves.
Okay, I just wanna make sure it wasn't just those files that we're being waiting on, 'cause if it is, like I mentioned to Wes today, he could do it, you know, with me, because it's just moving these boxes from here to here, and, you know. But if there's other things, then...
Nope, and then I believe I've had a couple offices ask for half hour here, half hour there, to basically move and replace some things in various offices here in the building.
I think too, didn't we ask for the cabinets that are still on the wall in my office over there? They're to be taken down and brought over here?
Well, they're being taken down. I would be more glad to bring them over.
I know Kathy asked for them, up above her counter there, so we can talk to them. Yeah, the ones that were in my office. So I didn't know if they'd take them down yet or not.
Actually, if, I know they started working on the ones in the old assessing office, and then they were supposed to move and start taking those ones down. So any of those cabinets that were put up, that were fairly new, in good shape, yes, they were gonna be removed and taken down. Now, are you... When we take them down, just because of room and that, they are cleaning them, and they're putting them in the old meeting room section of that building, where there's the least amount of problems, and they're not gonna get full of gunk again. Until we figure out when they're gonna get mounted, or a contractor that's gonna do that, can they stay there, or would you, do you want them brought over here and sell them, we need to determine where?
Mine can stay there, I can't speak for anybody else, but mine can stay there until they're ready to put them in.
Well, yeah, all that, all that stuff will be ready to repurpose whenever anybody's ready for it.
I'll make a motion that we allow DPW to retain Patrick till the end of this year to be reevaluated as a January meeting, to see if he's needed any longer for this year.
Support. Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Clerk Keith. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion passes. Other amendments, normal month-to-month stuff, little odds and ends, things that we take care of, unless anybody has any questions?
The, I didn't, I didn't see the email yet, I didn't look, I'm just curious. The odor, are we assuming or leaning towards sewer, or are we still, no idea?
That seems to be the conduit that it's transversing through. That seems to be common thus far.
So are we telling DP or Detroit Water and Sewer that it's their problem, or are we still...
No, 'cause it's not, it's not their problem. It's not coming from, it's not coming from the south end, up through the interceptors, as far as we can tell at this point.
We're collecting data right now, so we'll be able to make a good determination. Just curious.
Yeah, I mean, there, we, two weeks ago, there was a representative from DWSD out here, they're aware of the problem, they, they've actually even made some recommendations. We've actually followed through on some of those, you know, like TVN, our lines here alongside the building, which were inconclusives thus far.
So anything from the road to the building is our responsibility, but along the road is, some of that is our responsibility too? If there were issues in there?
This one's a private, you know, privately owned, private property, if you will, yeah, and the, you know, the line from the right way to the building would be the property owner's responsibility. Anything in the right way and along the roadway would be the community, the public utilities' responsibility.
Okay. That, that's what I was wondering, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Code Enforcement report.
Michigan Liquid Control Commission inspection forms have been filed with my office.
Thank you. Any other questions? Assessing Department report. Any questions regarding the report? Engineers report. Mr. Safe.
No questions, receiving files.
Questions for Mr. Safe? Questions? Library report. I'll read the cover letter. Lennox Township Library will be closed for the Christmas holiday, Wednesday, December 24th, 2014, and Thursday, December 25th, 2014. We will reopen on Friday, December 26th. The library will also be closed Wednesday, December 31st, 2014, and Thursday, January 1st, 2015. We will reopen on Friday, January 2nd, 2015. Santa Claus is coming to Lennox Township Library, Mr. and Mrs. Claus will be visiting the library on Saturday, December 13th, at 1:30. The husband and wife duo will read a story and take photographs with our library patrons. Everyone is welcome, please take a moment to check out the library's new website, at lennoxlibrary.org. Thank you. Questions? Senior Center report.
We, I didn't have one of those, no.
I didn't either. Actually, I know. I don't have one either. None available? Thank you. Not one available. Supervisor report. I would just like to thank everybody that participated and volunteered for the community dinner at the New Haven High School. It was a huge success. I, I think estimates were between 500 and 600 people that showed up. We barely made it with the food, it was fantastic. And also too, I'd like to say good job to our EMS. Mr. White, I don't know where he, where he went to, there he is over there. Great job decorating the ambulance for the tree lighting ceremony in New Haven, so a nice parade over there. Guys did a good job, and that was a great turnout too, so the community really had a couple nice events. And I'd like to see us possibly get a tree lighting up here for the future. Maybe there's something we can do, I know we talked before about getting a holiday tree. Might be something we can look into. That's all I have. Thank you. Treasurers report. Make a motion to accept the Treasurers' report?
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Orders and bills?
We'll be utilizing the amount that's on here, the checks are not finished yet. This early in the month, there's still bills coming in.
I have a question on here, we have SEMCOG on here because the annual membership dues were due, and so we're gonna go ahead and pay them. But I think in last year's minutes, and we said we'd give it one year and see if we thought it was worth it, what have we done? I understand Jeanette went to a meeting, but we've gotten no reports on anything. Do we really feel it's worth $1,000 a year to be a member of SEMCOG?
I've, I've had contact with their liaison. It's, it's basically one of those situations where, when you're involved and they have monies available, you're the communities they look at. So it's more of a long-term participation. If the board doesn't feel like we need to belong, fine, but it's one of those things when they go after grants, they look at their membership, how they can help their membership, bolster their communities first, before other ones. Jeanette, if you wanna speak about the one you went to? She can give you a quick overview.
So was there just one meeting that was attended this year?
Yes.
How many meetings did they have, either?
I was only made aware of like two other ones. That was it.
The general assemblies, I think they have three a year.
Yeah.
Their next one, I believe, is in December, not December, January or February.
The other meetings were for their elected officials, I believe.
That's the general assembly ones. This last one that I went to was in Ann Arbor, it was at the U of M, and they did a small tour, and then they had a few issues, and they talked about it, voted on. I will be doing a report to give you an update on all of that soon. That was two weeks ago.
Yes.
So if there's grants available, they'll actually write them for us?
No, they go after big grants for, for areas. They'll make you aware of things you can go after. That's what they try to do, is help communities get money for certain projects, basically.
Really don't need if we know if we need them to do that, 'cause we have our engineer and our planner that's following up on that.
Actually, he's been good with that. We've got a lot of...
Mr. Safe might have some knowledge too, or could ask him if he's worked with SEMCOG and any other...
They also have a ton of knowledge and the history of all the different areas, and if we needed the data for a specific reason, they could compile that for us at no charge, 'cause we're a member.
Good evening. SEMCOG normally concentrate on developed cities. Unfortunately for Lennox, we're still young. Most of the grants are applied towards storm management, and like an MS4, flood management, that sort of thing. And they also involved in road rehab grants, which mostly apply for cities, not townships. So we haven't got, have the luck, had the luck to be matched with any of their grants they're working on. But that's what they do. They go after, they have an in-house specialist that they, they chase all these grants, and they have a huge pool of knowledge, but we, unfortunately, we did not get a chance to tap into that. Now, do you, do you keep that membership, just to wait for that big one to come in, or just disconnect and, and just get a help from, you know, my office and the planner? Of course, the attorney can help with those grants too. But this is a free service that, that they, they offer, if they got it.
Well, I think that's why we disconnected from them before.
Not anymore.
And it's not free, we get $1,100 a year.
Have they ever done anything for the township yet?
No, we've only been one year.
No, we were years ago, and we gave it up because they did nothing for us, that's why we discontinued it, because...
There's nothing they can do for us, as a township.
Sir Mad is telling you just exactly why we discontinued it years ago, but then last year, when it was brought to us again, we thought, well, maybe we try it, maybe there's something new, but clearly in the minutes last, last year, we said, we'll try it for a year.
That's correct.
And as far as I can, that's why I asked, 'cause I hadn't heard that there had been any meetings, I hadn't heard any updates on anything, and I think $1,100 is, we're throwing it out the window themselves.
Excuse me, want to, if you'd like to come up to the podium, be happy to...
Just wanna give you a little bit more information too. When I went to the meeting, there was two issues in front of all the members that go to legislation, and they voted on things. That was, one was the McComb-Worger Trail, and there was many issues on that, but that was going to Lansing. Another issue was, my school's like, sorry, forgot. But there was, they're there to re, not rewrite, take issues to Lansing and fight for our concerns. And that's what the general legislature is for, is you go there and you give them your opinion, and you listen to all these different committees that they have, and we can take our concerns for our township and go there. And that's just being part of the big state.
One time a year?
No, they have more. It's just I don't know exactly, I'd have to go back to my file and see when the next one is. No, they have more than one a year, and then you can get on committee, committees that meet once a month on these different issues.
I feel we have representatives in Lansing that can take that message for us for free. We voted them in to do that down, so I don't see why we have to pay them. Yeah, they do it.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think I just read in the paper, Chesterfield Township just dropped their membership, didn't they? Because they said, they said they weren't doing anything for them.
I have no idea.
I would rather decline membership in SEMCOG and use that money for something else. I mean, we, we're trying to find funds to give our employees something of a raise at some point in time. I mean, little things like this, I mean, yeah, it's $1,100, but $1,100 can add up, so I'd make a motion that we decline membership in SEMCOG. Now, what do we do? Because this, this billing is actually for this year. Do we have to do that, do we do it for this year?
Not if, not if it's going forward, if we don't pay it.
Wasn't there an issue that we never paid last year's?
It was, Karen said she never saw where it got paid last year.
No, I could not find anywhere in the bill that I was handed, was dated back in March. But we felt it was, we had okayed it, said we were gonna do it for a year, so... How do you read that?
Yeah, it dates March 15th, so that would probably be for the year that we just were in, that we've gone through.
I think we owe that, and then we need to do something formally and...
If we're ready, redo.
And say...
That's what it looks like to me.
We can call, we can call them and ask them. I'll support Trustee Churchy's motion. Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Trustee Boyd. Other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion passes. Still on orders and bills?
Okay, so with that said, the amount is still the same, because that's for last year.
You all should have a revised one, the whole...
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the orders and bills at $242,374.90.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Other questions or discussion? Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Churchy?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Ottenbacher?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Trump.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Trustees report. Trustee Churchy, please.
On the planning commission level, we had the Dollar General sign requests, that was approved, and then the planner let us know that he had some preliminary meetings with a couple of different developments, and he's also going over the zoning amendments and checking that, and he says that a little, there's some discrepancies here and there, and he wanted to put the buck in everybody's ear again, that we may like to look forward to doing their clear zoning program. It is quite expensive, but it's something we could talk about, and I can give you the, I told him to give me a cost analysis, or somewhat of one, of what it's costing us now for him to, for his company to straighten out the ordinances, versus if we went forward with the clear zoning, that would negate that, you know? So it's gonna be more expensive, but in the long run, it may be beneficial, because then it'll be easier for us, the residents, developers, the attorney, if you're using this program. So it's something to start thinking about again. We could also budget it in, you can't split it up into payments or years, but he mentioned we could always budget like half in one year and half in the next. So that was a suggestion that was brought up too, so, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Boyd?
Just at the grant for the park, and I don't know, Sir Mad, did you get the, the scoring information for the park grant?
No.
Okay, I gotta, and I don't understand it all, I actually wanna catch up with you. We actually, the scores are in, so we're actually at the last steps, from what I understand, of getting the grant, or not getting the grant, hopefully getting the grant. But I would like to catch up with you, and maybe you, I got it printed up there, and you can show me what that means. But the scoring is done, and we're at the last steps of whether or not we're gonna get the park grant. So hopefully, we'll be hearing something very, very soon, 'cause I know we need to get moving to get this to happen in the spring, so hopefully we get something very quickly. That's all I have.
Thank you. Clerk's report.
The Lennox-New Haven Historical Society Tea is this Saturday at 12 o'clock noon. You need tickets ahead of time. So if you, if anybody's interested, I can get a phone number on where you can get tickets to that. The only other thing is, there is a recount scheduled for the New Haven Presidential vote. It was expected, it was anticipated when we saw that the count was 23 votes between the two of them, so that's upcoming. That's all I have.
Is there a charge for that, for the recount?
Um, actually, she had to pay for it. Actually, she had to pay for it. The person asking for it, he had to pay, and it was like, she had to pay like forty dollars.
Does that cover our costs? Is that what they, that's what they charge?
It's mostly just me and Carol. So, no, I don't, we don't get any of it. The county gets it.
They come here and use this bill?
Yeah. And the county actually does the, does everything. We don't do anything. We just give them our stuff. But like I said, the night of the election, it was anticipated, so.
Okay. Thank you. Motion, please.
Okay, first, what's that? Dinner tomorrow?
There's a, what?
Board's dinner or something.
Oh, it's a food pantry dinner. I don't know what the invitations are. Jeanette, I don't know. I don't know. I believe that's invite only, or what's going on?
Yeah, I just didn't know if any of you were going. I can't, I have to work, so.
Yeah, I never signed, I never got our invitation.
Yeah, we never got the invitations, but I know we talked about it.
I think it's an invite only.
Yeah, Cindy was in charge of creating a list and passing out invitations, so I have no idea who was on that list.
Okay, I didn't know if the board was supposed to be represented there or what, so. I'll make a motion to receive and file on reports.
Support.
Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by clerk Keith. Other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion passes. No unfinished business this time. Number twenty new business, letter A, fire inspectors winter conference. Chief?
I gave everybody a copy of a short, brief letter as well as the flyer of the upcoming winter conference for fire inspectors in the state is coming up in January. So this is something I normally go through every year for continuing ed classes. You see the breakdown in my letter of the cost. So the total cost would be three seventy-two, sixty plus meals.
Where's it at?
At the Kellogg Center in Lansing.
And does this include ZEs?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, there is. Yeah, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the conference for Chief Moushey. Total cost of three hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty cents with the use of the township vehicle if it's available.
Plus meals, support.
Yes. Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Churchy. Other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
With that said, there was an email. It has nothing to do with, the MTA early bird, the fifteenth, if anyone's going. Karen and I need to know so that we can get the check to them before the fifteenth to keep the, to get the early bird.
Stonehouse lease agreement renewal. Everybody has a copy of the lease. We have contacted our tenants. They will definitely like to renew the lease for another year if all terms and conditions remain the same. They are unavailable this evening. They have a family event. But our course of action would be to, if this is approved, to have them sign this at their first opportunity and to go forward with this. Yes, ma'am.
Who's responsible for keeping the painting on the house, keeping the painting done?
Painting?
The painting, yeah. Who is to be responsible? If the township owns home and they're leasing it, then the township would be responsible for doing that kind of maintenance.
I know, Kim, if you want to respond to that, I know you've done repairs before, things of that nature.
Everybody says in here the tenant's responsible on the lease.
On the outside.
On the outside?
Outside house, outside. It's brown on the outside and I just don't know what they break.
You're talking to trim?
The stain.
The stain, it's looking a little, it's a little dull to me. I'm just questioning, you know, who's responsible.
I know, personally, I believe, speaking for the board, I know as little money as been spent as possible because I believe if it ever comes down to an issue, the house is going to be demolished because the cost for a sewer hookup is so extensive. Am I, am I right in saying that? I don't know if anybody would like to speak to that?
Yeah, unfortunately, the cost to hook that up to the sanitary would be very, very expensive. We already researched that.
I have no, I have no knowledge of that. I think it's a shame to tear it down. I think it's a beautiful house.
We thought about making it into, say, when we have a park and rights person that would be in charge of everything, we have them in there, but it would cost so much to make it handicap accessible and all the things that we'd need to do that it wouldn't work.
Plus, you'd have to have somebody man it. You'd have to have somebody stationed there. You can't have a dwelling.
Yeah, it's a shame because it is a.
It's a, I'd always like that. If you want to hang on in there and who could have outside, who, yeah, that one.
I think the best thing we can do is, is keep a tenant in there, keep it maintained as much as possible, make sure the monthly rents are paid, and that it's structured, leased out and safe at this point.
When did we last raise it to a couple of years or? Yeah, it's been, Karen's asking about the rent. It's been there for quite a while. We haven't raised it because we just, they're getting a good deal, that's for sure. But we're happy to have somebody in there that is taking care of it and it's a firefighter and one of our own people, so.
Yeah, it is a first responder that we have.
Right, right. Yeah, I just was curious. I couldn't remember what we did. It was so many years ago. That's been a while, yeah.
Well, and that's with the expectation that there won't be major upgrades done at our expense, so.
And to my knowledge, we've not been, I don't think we've been hit with a lot of need over there, right?
No, the last, the last repair that we had to do was a new roof, I would say roughly five years ago.
Taken trace down?
Yeah.
We probably did it just in time.
But as far as the actual.
Winds took two of mine down.
Seven hundred a month.
And everything's been going fine?
Yep, very good.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the extension of the lease of the Stonehouse to the meeting annual event for seven hundred dollars per month.
Support.
Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by clerk Keith. Other questions or discussion? The last page with dates, and I know I talked to Karen, she said, because two signatures four months apart from Angie to Tim signing it, I think that one of the things we have to make sure of is that both of them sign this right away because this is a signed document saying that they're agreeing to all of this. And for four months, actually, because the lease is up in November, and she didn't even sign it until February. And we're already passed when it was due. So when we give this to them, even if we have to send it with one of them and say, we'll give both of the signatures, what I think that's one of the demands we have to make is that this is signed by both immediately.
I mean, many attempts to get both of them here at the same time. If you'd like, I can be at their house at 12 o'clock when Tim gets home for lunch and have them both sign it right in there.
It's their responsibility, though, not yours.
I know that. I just don't want to have to do this again. I even told them, call me, I'll come out and meet you by the front door. And that didn't work, so.
I mean, it's, they need to know that you're in here and you signed this, or you may not be able to stay here. I mean, because this is a signer. I mean, Steve, I mean, I would think that'd be pretty serious when you.
Yes, you are absolutely right. This should be signed as soon as possible because the lease would be, it's actually expired at this point by reading of this, and they need to get it re-upped. They don't have a right to continue on it there unless they get it signed. So it's in their best interest as well as ours to get it signed.
Okay, thank you. Copy machine repair.
I had some stuff over the last couple of weeks that was sent to the auditors and it found that the touchpad was not working on the copy machine to actually scan stuff in. I sent Veronica a note and said, you know, can you find something out about the copier? These companies, she did some research, and this is what she came up with. It actually, the touchpad is working again, but we don't know for how long, because this isn't the first time that it has gone out. That copy machine is quite a few years old. It is also our fax machine, our scanner, our major copier, our printer that you can do stuff with. So I guess we do need to get it fixed, but I also believe that we need to look at getting an upgraded copy machine from there.
And Veronica did tell me today that the head was working again for double sided, but now she's not able to fax anything. Nothing's going out of the fax machine. And she did hear from Kurt Albert. They said it would be sixteen hundred dollars for whatever to fix it. So my thing is, let's get one of these people out here to see exactly, because they don't know what it's exactly, what's wrong.
For sixteen hundred dollars, I would rather go into what Dan has.
I have a lease agreement. We don't pay for anything. We don't even pay for toner or staples, hundred sixty-five dollars a month.
Yeah, that's not a bad way to go, chief. No worries, no headaches.
And your cost is based on how many copies. So, you know, your cost is going to be higher.
Probably would be higher.
Because you guys make a lot more copies than we do. But that's, that's the way to go.
Especially since that machine in the copy room is, we use it for everything.
And she did talk with the representative that takes care of you, and they only handle the Ricoh, is that how those Ricoh machines?
It's a great machine. It's the same ones that we have throughout the college. It's a great, great machine.
Yeah, I can tell you from my experience, once you start fixing them, it's never ending. It's a nickel and dime you to death. Once they're out of date, they're out of date and disrepair. Either upgrade to a new model or do a lease agreement every, in my opinion, every three to four years.
Okay, so with that said, and looking at what she's compiled, and most of it is the one-way travel and stuff, and how far these places are away, I guess I would recommend having Rico come in and present new machines to us.
You should be able to get salesmen to come here for free, three of them.
That's what I'm saying. Well.
That's cool.
All right, then I don't know what other ones besides Rico. Is this something that Veronica and maybe Jeanette could work on together? Getting three companies in here?
I know we could call locally, like Craig Zimmer and. Denny, did you get quotes? When you went with these guys?
Chris, it's been so long, because I've failed for a long time. I can't remember if I got a quote.
Steve, is there, is there something where we can say, maybe since he's already using them, it's already been, they're already using this company for the fire department, which is part of the township? We can just go with them, or do we have to offer quotes?
Well, I think it's more a question for Rico, whether they would be willing to extend their existing contract to provide additional machines than you're operating under the same contract you've already awarded. And if they would be changed terms, you've already been through it. If that's an opportunity, then you might have something.
Well, maybe we could talk to, get three different companies.
Absolutely.
With Rico being one of them.
That means there's, absolutely.
And maybe Rico will come in and say, you have a great deal for us. But I'm not, Kurt Albert is the one that I was thinking is the closest, and even though they're per hour is a little bit more. But now you're saying they said.
She talked to them and that, yeah. And that's who I was intending to look at, too, until I heard that today.
Ever since I've worked here, Craig Zimmerman from Premier has religiously called me every six months to see if we need anything. We have never given him us business. He's quoted prices before for us for different machines, and we've always gone to somebody else. I'd like to give him another shot. I don't know anything about Kurt Albert.
I would pick three. I'd get three, three quotes.
Rico is the one Denny and Shannon from building have been working with, getting a price on a scanner for blueprints. So I would definitely.
Definitely yourself.
Okay, that's fine, as long as Rico is one of them. Yeah, so if, maybe if you and, like I said, you and Veronica can work together on it, because she can make the phone calls and, you know, do the time-consuming part of it. And so actually, then I guess this should be tabled. I make a motion to table this issue until the January meeting, having more information on replacing that copier.
Support. Motion by clerk Keith, supported by trustee Boyd. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion passes.
Mr. Supervisor? Sir. I don't know if you noticed, but we had a little sidebar over here. We weren't quite sure whether the lease, the prior agenda item actually was voted on. We think there might have been a vote taken on it, so.
Motion was made in support of the.
Karen Churchy and Jody seconded it.
There was some discussion.
Motion by Churchy supports.
I'm sorry, could you, could you say that again?
There was some discussion after the motion was made, and then I don't think a vote was ever taken. Or we, we, none of us remember a vote being taken, so we.
We didn't take a vote?
I think so.
Okay.
Jody made the motion. I have written, or Karen made the motion. Jody seconded it, but maybe we didn't say.
Okay.
That's important.
From that point now, are there, is there any other discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion passes. That is what I meant. Okay, thank you. Employee compensation for building shutdown on November thirteenth.
As most of you know, we were, Cam was discussing the noxious smell that we have in here. And on the thirteenth of November, it was really, really bad. It was on Thursday, I believe. And so we had several people that were in working, and they were actually becoming ill from the smell. So we, as a board, Chris came in, myself, I think we called Jody to see what she thought, and we ended up sending people home. There were seven people that actually got sent home. They punched out and they have not been paid for the day. I feel, we sent them home. I feel as a board member that they should be paid for that day. But Jody felt that we needed to do it as an agenda item, and everybody agreed upon it, or disagree, whatever you want.
Are we looking at four hours?
When did we?
I think it was like ten o'clock.
It was before lunch that we sent them all to their eleven. I think it was, some of them got out of here around ten, and some of them didn't leave until, you know, eleven.
Is there a motion to pay them for the full day?
I, yes.
Any support for that?
I, I understand, well, I didn't know we were to the point where we should make a motion. We have a way to discuss it then. Well, I, I made a motion. I think that they should be paid. We sent them home.
One moment. Support, I'll support the motion. Motion by Treasurer Ottenbacher, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions or discussion? Discussion, ma'am?
My question was, you don't have anything in your SOPs that would come up with under this heading that you, if someone get, what happened here, this circumstance, do you pay your employees for the full day, the rest of the day? Or do you pay them a total of six hours? You have nothing written in your SOPs for emergencies like that?
As far as my knowledge, no.
This is kind of a weird situation, and I don't.
I understand. I know what happened and everything, but I'm just curious. There's nothing. There could be, have another emergency. You could be out of power in the middle of the day.
Like a show-up time minimum, show-up time hours, or something to that effect?
I'm just going with my history, work history. When there's an emergency or we have no parts in the plan, we don't get paid, only a percentage of the hours left. So that's why I'm wondering if they had anything written up. No. Thank you.
Fortunately, we are in the middle of doing our SOPs, and it will be brought up.
In history, the only other reason we shut the building down like that was like snow emergencies, and we didn't, we have not paid for a snow emergency. This one, it was making the employees sick. So it was kind of like we needed to shut down for health, safety, welfare. I guess you could say the same for snow.
You know, that, that should be brought up, though, with like a minimum show-up time. If we do send home for a snow emergency or dangerous situation, we probably should establish some minimum amount of time for show-up or if someone travels into work or, and it's by our cause, then they're sent home. I'm wondering if the motion should be more specific about, just so we, we know exactly what we're doing, each person that left, when they left. So that it's individual, because like you said, some are finishing a couple of things up before they left. So some are going to get three hours, some will get four hours, or however it works out. So I'm just wondering if it's more specific.
She mentioned getting paid for the full day.
That's your motion.
So if somebody was to come here until frag hours, they'll still get paid. So, if somebody was here until frag hours, they'll still get paid for eight or they're here for four and they'll still get paid for eight.
Okay.
I really like the point you made, Jan, because yeah, we had something we probably should look into because I understand the situation and I understand people getting sick, you know, because, you know, it's behind their control, but I'm kind of a little mixed and indifferent on it because, like I said, okay, then we've got snow emergencies or then we got another situation. And any other business, if they shut down, you go home, you don't get paid. Now, if the power's gone out, you go home for a couple of hours and call back, then you get paid. So, we got to watch it too because it's another precedent thing that could be set. So possibly if we write it into that policy manual, that would be a good idea to have a percentage like that. So, I don't want to, you know, it's not their fault they had to go home or get paid, but still, what does everybody else do? What does the county do type thing, so.
I respectfully disagree with you, Karen. It's based on, you can't say, give it a blanket statement that no other business is paid. I've worked at a lot of places throughout my lifetime and I can tell you a lot of places do pay you for the entire shift. It depends on what is wrote in your SOGs or if you have a contract. So, you can't put a blanket statement on that. In this case...
Unless he wasn't lucky enough to be the one that was.
Yeah. In this case, it was a noxious odor that made the building truly unsafe to be in because it was hydrogen sulfide is what we were measuring. Okay? So, no employee should be exposed to that and they shouldn't be penalized for some type of problem that it's either a building issue or something coming into the building out of our control. They shouldn't be penalized, so.
Steve?
That's my comment.
Any thoughts?
Well, it would be a good idea to have something in the policy. I don't recall a provision even in the draft that we have been working on and I can certainly work something up. I know that's coming up on agenda. We can schedule a date for that, so we can implement something. Whether it's zero, fifty percent, hundred percent, really a discretionary decision by the board, whatever you think is fair and reasonable for the community.
Would you like to speak again?
I'm just saying it's quite a difference between noxious odors. That was something totally out of control, like it would be the power outage, but that's, you're talking about people's health then. So, that's a major thing.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. It's something like that, yeah, but I know we got to be really careful because the next issue could be, well, you did it then, why can't you do it now? So, because we've run into that before. So, I think fine tuning that.
Yeah. Are you jumping, do you have something else you want to add?
No, just to agree, that's exactly why you would want to put it in the manual.
All right. Motion is to pay for the full day. You supported that?
Yes.
Trustee Boyd? Any other questions or discussion?
I need, so I look at that day and if someone worked two hours, they get paid for five and a half. If they worked three hours, they get paid for four and a half.
Correct.
Okay.
That's a motion.
I just need a verification.
They get paid for seven and a half hours.
Everybody understands it? Full day. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes. Schedule employee healthcare coverage workshop. Now, this has to be approved, I believe, a month and a half, Jeanette, you said, or by March fifteenth? Or I got that backwards. February. What's it due?
Our healthcare is due March first.
March first, I'm sorry.
We need to have it approved and paperwork turned in. Our Mike has to have it turned in forty-five days ahead. That brings us to the middle of January. Sometime between now and our first January meeting.
Or within fifteen days after January, we'd have to schedule another meeting and do it. Or between now and the first meeting, correct?
Yes. Michael would be very nervous if we had to wait then.
We don't even have anything yet. We only have the two...
We all have, right, we all have the...
See, can we say something more?
Aye, also.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Okay, I responded to the email.
You're the only one?
Was I the only one?
Yes, ma'am.
I put in some suggestions there. I actually copied Michael Mueller on it so that he knew where I was coming from. I did have a conversation with him, but I told him to hold off because I'm only one person waiting to see what everybody else had responded to Jeanette.
I responded because I agree a hundred percent with you. You pretty much spoke for me.
Yeah.
Well, that's what, you know, and so I just said I want to see some high-end, low-end, mid-end. I want to see mostly just the, what I said, Blue Cross and maybe half, just to get some different feels in there.
I told him, give three, three different Blue Cross have them and another one. I said, use your discretion.
Basically like we discussed before.
Well, that's what I said. We were all ready to go with that other, you know, that other policy. It just didn't, wasn't feasible for that time of the year.
Correct.
So, that's what I said to him. I said, I definitely want to see that one again at whatever the new policy rates are.
Yeah.
So...
So, we just need to schedule a meeting before the end of the year and...
Right, and he, Michael requested two because there'll probably be so much information and you'll probably have a lot of questions and then you want, if you want to invite any of the employees who take the healthcare in case they have any questions, he suggested two.
Or we, here's where it comes up once again, from now to the end of the year or we have two weeks after the first of the year, but like Jeanette said, that's cutting it very close. We would have, to be on the safe side, the only options would be from now to the end of the year or the first week after the new year to get it done. I can tell you, this month is crazy. I don't know how busy everybody is the first week after the new year coming back, but this month is crazy.
Well, could we have the first meeting, how soon, how long would it take him to pull this stuff together? And I'm thinking like next week? Karen knows what her schedule is.
I'm off Monday, but then again, we have a planning commission meeting, but that's not until seven thirty, so we could meet earlier.
Next week?
Anytime during the day. Yeah, the fifth.
Next week's the eighth.
Or the eighth. Okay, the eighth, I'm off on Monday. That day, so.
So, we could have a meeting at four o'clock and...
That time is good for you.
Is everybody else good with that?
That's fine.
I have my best date, but it'll work. Tuesday or Wednesday would be better, but I can do Monday.
Well, if you could get this stuff together by the eighth, at least then we have something to look at and we can do the quick questions for him.
It gives everybody plenty of time to ask questions before the next board meeting.
We don't even know if he's going to be available.
Right, if he's available. And then we could actually do email questions to him over the holidays so that if we do have to wait until after the first of the year, at least we're ahead of the game a little bit.
Should we pick two dates in case he's not available on the eighth?
That's fine.
Because I think we need to make this happen. I mean, we're about to wire. We have to make this happen.
Well, through December, Tuesdays and Wednesdays are pretty much out because I'm on a twelve to nine schedule. On Thursdays and Fridays, I'm working at the dentist in New Haven, so I'll be done by six. So, a Thursday and a Friday could be like a seven o'clock meeting or something or six thirty.
About the eighth and the eleven.
Works for me.
What is the eleven follow?
No, the Thursday.
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 On Monday, Thursday.
Okay, see if he could do the...
So, you're saying Karen, Monday, you could be at say four o'clock? Yes. Okay. And then Thursday? That one would be the eighth, anytime. Your anytime, okay. What about Thursday? Go by, yeah. Thursday... Would be after seven, you're saying? I think I've got patience till five thirty or six. I'm not quite sure. Okay. So, this Thursday's my first day there, so I'll know.
You're talking seven PM for the eleven?
Or like six or six thirty because I'm going to be just down the road, so. See what works best for him. The eighth and the eleventh, I could do those two dates.
What if he's available both days? Do you want me to book him for both days?
I would say the Monday where she's available at four o'clock versus seven or seven thirty at night when that guy's driving an hour to him.
Yeah, like I said, December eleventh, we could probably do it at six.
All right, but if we were going to schedule two meetings with him...
Well, but is he going to have the information for that post-together?
Right. Everything he gathers would be all in...
No, I thought we were just giving him two dates that were available, not scheduling two meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Right, or just asking...
So, if he can't do the eighth, see if he can do the eleventh.
So, we're not going to book two at all?
Two options.
That's it?
Correct.
Okay, because he wanted two meetings.
At whatever meeting we have, we can discuss how much time it'll take in between.
And then we can always make another.
Correct. Because at that point, we'll even have time after the other, after the end of the month if we had to go into that.
And he'll be here hopefully with his calendar in front of him and we will be here, so we should be able to set that second meeting.
I'll reply to that.
And I'm not, I mean, basically we've, we've covered every plan. We do have the knowledge. It's him laying it out to us. It shouldn't take that long. I mean, we've been over this, how many, I forget how many plans we went through last year. He's just updating the information.
Right.
And we make a determination.
If he just took, if he just brought forward what he presented us that second time with the new rates.
But he even said at that time, things could drastically change by then, so it's up to him to know.
I think he prepared for every year changes, just like we've had. Every year we've had changes.
Now, are you going to open this up to employees who have a healthcare too so they can hear or no?
I don't see any reason for that.
Okay.
We did the last, I think we did the last meeting, if I'm not mistaken, for any questions and concerns, so they were addressed. I think that's a good way to get it out in the open.
Well, we went through this before. This is the board's decision on what the insurance is.
It is the board's decision.
And really, I said this last time, we start getting everybody's opinion that uses this and everybody's got different and it would just, I think it's opening up a can of worms. Basically, it's down to the board deciding what we can afford. And I don't see what bringing the employees in as soon as the meeting's done on the eighth, get that information to the employees absolutely to look it over, but as far as making that decision, I think that should be at the board level.
Thank you, Jeanette. Yeah, we don't have, we don't have the date yet. So, we'll give everybody that email as soon as we can and then we'll schedule it. Thank you. Reschedule policy manual workshop meeting. You need a motion for that?
No, you don't. You can call, no action taken.
You can say it.
Okay, as for the policy manual, I do have some small issues. It's mostly cosmetic with the policy manual to go ahead and, but we could wait until the January meeting to reschedule that so that we can see, you know, get over the holidays. Like you said, there's too much going on.
Plus, there'll be a good turn of job, like time to turn, time to work on.
All right.
Okay. Is that your motion?
Yeah.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Post. Motion passes. Sorry.
We tabled it.
Township holiday office hours. Everybody have a copy of the calendar? Basically, so everybody knows we are closed December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth and closed the thirty-first and the first. The twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth are already off days. So, between the twenty-fourth and the first, there's only two days that we could possibly be open and that would be the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth. In the past, we've had a shutdown for those two days. We've worked till the twenty-third and came back on the fifth, would be the first Monday coming back. And that would also be in coordination with our board meeting. So, any agenda items would be due, basically I think to play it safe on that Thursday, the eighteenth, if we would like, if we'd like to do this.
Well, you spoke with each of the offices, didn't you?
Yes, I spoke to a number of people and pretty much everybody had the same opinion that there was no need to be open on the twenty-ninth or the thirtieth. I don't know if you have a different opinion, but I believe that was from your office also.
Well, and normally the treasurer would have to be here, but because I have a bank that takes, the bank takes the tax payments, I do not have to legally be here in the building to accept payments because a lot of people like to come in before the end of December to get their taxes paid so they can use an American tax. So, I'm covered because I have the bank. First day, bank takes them.
Well, what we've done in the past is post an emergency contact number on the door. If anybody has any issues, they can contact the emergency contact number. We can go from there, but does anybody have any questions or any recommendations?
My thoughts on this, I would like to see us stay open, but I understand people want that time off between the holidays. We go through this every year. I think that if we're going to do this, let's just make it every year because as of the schedule that we put out that has all the holidays that we are closed, those days aren't in here. So, people aren't expecting it. Now, all of a sudden, we're going to be closed those two days, two extra days. So, if we're going to do this, let's just add it to our holidays that were closed, but that those are unpaid. And just so everybody in the audience realizes, those two extra days, our employees do not get paid.
They do not get paid.
It's not costing us anything to do that. But that way it can be out there and right now, this year, everybody knows that next year, we're closing.
And it's kind of crazy for those two days, like we have the building in a shutdown mode to bring all the temperatures back up and everything for a couple of hours and then down again for one, two, three, four, five, six days. So, it doesn't make much sense to fire everything up for two days when no one's going to hardly be here anymore.
This year, okay, the only problem I have with that, Chris, this year it's only two days. If Christmas landed on a Monday...
Could be more.
Then you're looking at...
Four days.
Four days.
I think we're going to have to dress us each year.
So, we can, we can on the, when the, when this gets published, have another disclaimer where it says meetings does not, you know, this meeting does not follow. We could also put something to the effect of customarily closed between Christmas and New Year.
That's a great idea.
Or just put on there because you got to publish it every year.
Right.
We can address it a lot earlier so the information is out there prior.
There's no, there's not residents, like, I mean, taxes are really the only end-of-the-year thing. There's nothing end-of-the-year that you guys can foresee that people come in and, I mean, because that's it. It's the last two days of the year that people can come in here and get anything done. And I don't do a lot of business up here and how I come and pay taxes, first time ever because I just bought a house, but I'm just wondering if there's people that are going to be coming to knock on the door those two days.
Building department, I would think there's not much going on then in the building department and at that point, there's no elections going on, so basically it's people coming in to pay their taxes. And I don't know now, the assessing office, I do know that December thirty-first, they have to be out doing their, their stuff, so I don't know whether they would want to be in here or not. That's...
And see, my other question with that, as you say that, and I understand... And see, my other question with that, as you say that, and I understand that, since you do have that they can go to the bank and pay their taxes, but let's picture most of the seniors are out here. Do they even know that? Do they know how to do that, or are they going to come knocking on the door? And I'm just trying to be realistic and thinking of the residents.
Chris, we haven't been open on a Friday for about 18 years, and they still say, "I was there on Friday to pay my taxes, and you weren't there." And we haven't been open. But, and I note that some people do print this information on their tax bills, but they don't read the stuff on the tax bill. They wait until they're here knocking on the door, and then, oh, yeah, that's right, they're closed on Fridays. So putting all that on there, they're not going to read it. And we don't get that much. I mean, they're getting used to the idea, this is about the third year, I think, that First State has taken taxes for us. So they should be used to it by now.
I think most of the employees are expecting these two days. I make a motion that we close the offices from the 24th of December through opening back up on January 5th.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Attenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Yes, Jeanette?
January, any items? When do you want them to be by?
I'm, I'm sorry, can you?
January, the board, who said, somebody said we'd have to have them by?
On the 18th, I.
Monday 18th.
Just close that to everybody.
Will that work for everyone?
Probably not, but we're, we're being told to do, so we better do it.
I'm just saying, I, everybody always says they want stuff in advance, and that's why I gave everybody notice. If they want it to happen, that would probably be their best date.
We'll do the best we can, and.
That's all we can do. 2015 meeting schedule.
I do believe the planning commission approved their portion of this.
Yes, we did.
Any questions or comments?
The other thing that I wanted to bring up was the July meeting, and I talked to both Jody and Karen about it, and, I mean, we're not seeing, you know, 100% aye to aye on it. I'm just wondering if we should have a meeting in July. I don't understand 100% why we don't, and there's always things that are left hanging. So I just want to throw it out there and see what the rest of the board thinks about actually having the July meeting. I know that goes back to, from what I understand, back to when GM informed us and everything was going on.
The two of us that were on shutdown during that time when the big three was shut down, and so years ago, that's what we did, was disbanded the July meeting. We went ahead and paid any bills that were going to incur penalties of any kind. We went ahead and, you know, approved all that, but we have not had one in a while in a few years.
I'm, I'm just throwing out that.
And because it usually falls around the 4th of July situation.
I'm even wanting to go a week later, just so we knew and so we can keep up on business. I'm okay with not doing it. I'm just throwing it out there.
And just so you know, most of them don't do the July shutdown anymore. I mean, I guess the plans do, but the rest of the, the rest does not.
I don't know what anybody, everybody thinks about that. You want to just stay with No July, or?
I have, I have no problem staying with No July, as long as we have a situation come up that we would call a meeting. If there's something that's pressing that needs to be addressed that we, we, we schedule meetings.
I thought we did that this year, but Jody couldn't find any minutes on it, so maybe we didn't. But I thought we had, had to call one. That's, that's why it popped into my head.
We always have that opportunity to do that, and that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
That, you have an opinion on it?
No, that, that's fine. If we get to, you know, May or June, then we're really have some important issues that have to be dealt with in July, we'll make a July meeting.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the 2015 Lenox Township meetings as presented.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Treasurer Attenbacher. Any other questions or discussion?
Did we want to put a disclaimer?
I was just going to say that we add something on there that the office is closed generally Christmas to New Year's. Some, you know, some wording like that.
You're making a motion to include that, huh?
Yes.
Okay, how about holiday office hours may be observed?
It's all right.
Between Christmas and New Year?
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
For, did we want to, do we have to adopt that for 2015? Was that part of it? With the stuff?
We.
Don't we generally do that?
I don't know if we have to adopt them. They are in our, I believe they're in our policy manual.
In our policy manual, yeah, that we follow.
Why, no, but for the public?
I, I don't know. We can post.
It's basically just that we follow the COVID County holidays.
We can post it as information, so that these dates are reserved by everybody. Yeah, or on the website.
If you're talking about the Township Board's meeting schedule?
No, the holidays.
Sure, sure, holidays.
The meeting schedule does need to be posted, the times and place and whatnot, but yeah, the holidays get moved.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Order review member reappointments. Want to. Three area of board order review members, the three current members have all expressed interest in serving again for the new term, which are Dave Mary, who did it tonight, yeah? Scott Clifford, and Daniel Glazza. We are being asked to appoint two alternates to by Tom Monchek. I don't know if he's discussed that with you, Dave, but he wanted, he said that, I think he said to Jeanette, he recommended two alternates. I know we're short one alternate right now, but that was his recommendation. But I appreciate you guys' service, and I think you've done a great job. So. Three names are David Mary, Scott Clifford, and Daniel Glazza.
G L A Z H.
Correct.
Glazza.
Make a motion that we reappoint Dave Mary, Scott Clifford, and Daniel Glazza to the Board of Review for a two-year term from January 2015 through December 31st, 2016.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Attenbacher. Also, too, anybody interested in being an alternate, please respond to the supervisor's office with a letter of interest to become an alternate for the Board of Review. Any other questions or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Would that be something we could put on the website? Sure, that, that's out there and.
Sure.
Get it out to more people.
Planning Commission appointments. I'd like to thank Jeanette for working tirelessly on this. This has been a, a tough one over the years. Because of the way these terms are laid out, there's always been questionable time for reappointments and things of that nature. Jeanette, you researched back to
2002.
2002.
Using our board minutes.
That is where we've come up with this determination. Do you have a letter from Chuck Stromer, who would like to be reappointed? I believe it's, right now, it's Chuck. And who else, Jeanette?
For planning, that's it.
For planning. Just Chuck. So Chuck is asked to be put back on it, recommending he's put back on it. Need a motion for that?
I make, I make a motion that we reappoint Chuck Stromer to the Planning Commission term, January 2015 through December 2017.
Support. Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any other questions or discussion? I, I'd just like to make a discussion point. These have all been laid out. One of the issues we had when people have been replaced, that's where some of the issues have taken place, about people filling in for their terms, overlapping reappointments. So this is kind of the guideline we're going to follow from now. If anybody has any questions about it, please let us know. But this is what we've come up with at this point, and I think we still want to discuss for if someone resigns, or how we're going to address those issues.
It would really be helpful to have in the minutes, when one person is leaving in the middle of a term, to put that in the minutes, saying, Jeanette is leaving on this date, and so and so is taking over the rest of her term.
Just fulfillment of the rest of that term, not a three-year term or anything of that nature. So we definitely want to make sure that's clarified. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
You're welcome. I also want to let everyone know that Chuck is the liaison between the planning and the zoning.
Yep, you might as well stay right there, too. So next one, zoning board of appeals appointment.
And that would be Chuck Geisler and Kurt Flood.
And they've already expressed interest in being reappointed.
Verbally, yes.
Verbally, so.
If it needs something in writing, I can give that.
Like to reappoint them.
You said Chuck and Kurt Flood?
Correct.
I make a motion that we reappoint Charles Geisler and Kurt Flood to the zoning board of appeals with a term of three years, spanning December 1st, 2014, through January 1st, oh, I'm sorry, let's try that again, through December 31st, 2017.
Support.
You said 14?
Yeah, you did. It's 2015. You said 2014, Jody?
Well, because we're doing it tonight, 12/1, 2014.
Oh, okay, 12/1.
Yeah, he's appointed tonight. His term doesn't start till January 1st.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by, did you support her?
I did.
Treasurer Attenbacher. Any other questions or discussion, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And everybody also too sees how we laid that out also on the last page. So, thank you.
I would also like to add, we need an alternate on the zoning board of appeals. We need two alternates on the Board of Review. Maybe it's time we put an ad, short blurb stating that we are looking for participants.
You want to run an ad in the voice?
To our commissions.
In the voice? Yeah, I think that'd probably be your best advertisement.
Can it also be put on the website?
Yeah, that's what I suggest, and I, I think it's, because that's, that's free, and probably not too many people will see it, but.
So you just want it in the website?
No, I have to.
Oh, in there, okay, yeah.
I think our biggest, biggest response would be from the paper.
I make a motion that we do a one-timey ad in the voice newspaper, and also put it on the website, advertising for people to participate in our commissions.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Attenbacher. Also, too, we'll post it on our bulletin board, also, too, here, correct?
I'm sorry.
We can post it here on our board?
Yep.
Up front? Okay, great. Any other questions or discussion? Who will put it in the paper?
Um, the clerk's office, clerk's office.
Office, okay. I have two questions. First one in the bag. Yes, ma'am?
Can you give a phone number, so in case they watch this and want to call you?
Sure, and I'll address it to the supervisor's office, to your extension. Phone number's 586-727-2085, extension 117 to Deputy Supervisor's office.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Yes, ma'am?
I don't know too much about, oh, I don't know anything about these boards, these commissions. This is strictly open to Lenox Township residents?
Correct.
I just, I had no idea, so that's why I fixed it. Sorry, but dumb question.
The Planning Commission's the only one that can have new head residents, correct?
Okay, if you're asking me, yes, the Planning Commission under the new state law does have some flexibility in that requirement, but I, yeah, that is the old one.
That's what I thought. Any other questions? Okay, we were, we were voting on the newspaper?
I'm good.
All right, there's no other questions, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Letter L, schedule public hearing date for CDVG. Thank you, Jeanette. Appreciate. I'll stay right there.
I make a motion that we schedule the public hearing for the CDGB for the January 5th meeting at 7:30.
Thank you. Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. January 5th, 7:30.
Thank you.
Thank you. Letter M, we just received this once again from Tom Monchek, mailing 2015 personal property statements. I had Tom basically give me the information and his recommendation. You'll see the three that he did, ABNC, and he reviewed the quotes and decided to recommend KCI for this mailing at a cost of $437.65. In support of that KCI recommendation, he said that they've used them in the past, and they have provided satisfactory service. There, that's why he's recommending them.
Yeah, they did it last year. ACI is who we approved.
And they did the.
He apologized.
For the mailing also.
Yeah, he apologized for coming late with this, but.
I did talk to him about maybe getting a quote for a three-year, so that he wouldn't have to do this.
Every year.
He has two mailings a year, because it always seems like it comes down to the wire with these. So that way, it would be all taken care of.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the use of KCI in the amount of $437.65 for the personal property statements.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Attenbacher. Any other questions or discussion regarding this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Public comments. Are there any public comments at this time? No public comments. Oh, yes, ma'am?
I have a question about last month's, the one lady in the planning, building department requesting a pay raise, and it was suggested that they were going to offer a year, a dollar raise, and then I get you a retro back a few months or whatever it was. Was that accepted by this employee? Did she accept that?
Well, she's still here, and I haven't heard anything different.
Okay, I, I was just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? No other public comment? Support. Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Trustee Boyd. Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Trustee Boyd, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes, meeting adjourned.